Yes, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead and call me into order. Thank you, everybody, for coming in. First item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections to the minutes, if they'd be kind enough to share them, otherwise I will look toward a motion to approve. I will approve his review. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Minutes to approve. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, Prairie Meadows' fourth, conditional use permit for a PUD amendment.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is a amendment to a conditional use permit that establishes PUD for Prairie Meadows Estates' fourth addition. The addition is located on the southeast corner of Second Street Northwest and 235th Avenue. The original plat and PUD had a provision for attached townhomes, and there was a permit approved for a detached home, and it came to staff's attention that what was being built was different than what was approved in the PUD. The only difference being the housing type, detached home versus an attached home. So to make sure that we're compliant with what was approved, there is a process we need to go through, and this is essentially cleaning up to make the project compliant with the zoning, and that is to amend the CUP, which establishes the PUD. And we went through the existing zoning code, which was recently approved. As you know, when we approved the zoning code, we treated PUDs, rather than approving them through a CUP process, as rezoning them to all PUD flex. And so this site is a PUD flex. However, in the process, we've retained the integrity of those individual PUDs that were already approved. And because this was done through a CUP, the amendment to that CUP, which amends that PUD, is what we need to go through for this process. So the only change, again, there's a number of lots in there. Those individual units go from an attached townhome product to a detached, single-family home product. The setbacks now, rather than being zero, lot line setbacks, you'll see, will vary based on the individual units on the individual lots, anywhere from a five to a six and a half foot side yard setback. So that setback, you'll see, is a little different. Beyond that, everything is substantially consistent with the original PUD that was approved and the original plat. So no lot lines changed, no legal descriptions changed, it's simply the unit types that is on these individual lots. Staff findings are in the staff report for this to recommend approval of this change, and the applicant believes. If you're to answer any questions, then I'm certainly happy to answer questions you might have based on the staff report.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No. So was it a single dwelling that was different? Or that's being constructed that was different?
There was one unit that was approved by the building, got a building permit, correct?
There, yes. And when I got the other one, I didn't approve the first one, so when I saw the second one, that's when this all came about. It's like, they're not attached, they're just individual townhomes.
And so I believe all of the units were originally attached townhomes?
All of the units were attached.
And now they are all single-family detached. The number of units does not change, the density does not change, the use does not change, it's simply the product type, and thus setbacks because of public history. Correct?
Yeah, we, we, uh...
Go ahead.
The east side was always a single-family detached, and the west side wasn't. I think we changed it in our minds a year ago, but didn't know we had to go back through the process.
Oh, okay.
So I can respect that we have to do that. And we snuck one through, so...
But got caught.
Any other questions?
We didn't have any objections to it, it was just a matter, we actually thought this might be, in fact, more attractive for community as well, so...
And that's, and this is a public hearing, Mr. Chair, so...
Yeah. Tony, before I open the public hearing, did you have anything more you wanted to contribute?
No.
Okay.
No such questions of mine.
Gotcha. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything they would like to share, if they'd be kind enough to come up to the podium and share their name and address, please. Now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. I guess I don't really have any questions. It seems to be pretty straightforward in my mind.
Yeah.
If anybody has any additional thoughts or contrary thoughts, I'll...
No.
Okay, very good. With that said, I will look for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And before we move on to number four, I need somebody to hold my hand and explain to me how we have the authority as a city to rescind the variance. Because I think this has come up in the past, and to the best of my knowledge, that goes outside of...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if you, if you allow me to go through the staff report, I can talk through all of that.
Please. Is that the best place to start the conversation, sir?
Yeah, yeah, because it's all entwined within the whole staff report.
Please, this would be the staff report first.
It's sort of age nineteen during the packet, so...
And for the benefit of the record, the finding of public hearing pertaining to the Domino's variance rescind and reissue.
Correct. So this is, in my 25 years of planning, there's always something new that comes across your plate. And in that 25 years of planning, my personal experience is never have I come across a case where I needed to either revoke or rescind a variance, or amend a variance. And this is a particular case where we need to do one of, one of the other. In my office, our firm has been around since 1982, and we have had one client that has actually rescinded multiple variances. The difference in that particular case is that there was city-owned property, and the city, as the property owner, did that act. They rescinded that property right. So just to hit that one right on the head, because I know there's a resident who's providing the input, and I don't know if the resident is here, that they can certainly speak to this, they disagree with my opinion on multiple occasions. Because we haven't done this before, we did consult with the city attorney on this as well, and just so you know, I've also considered, consulted with other attorneys that I do work with on a regular basis, and we all kind of have the same conclusion on this. A variance was granted for this property in 2016. And a condition of that variance was, was never satisfied. That's that condition for a barrier of some sort to protect against noise that presumably would come from this improvement to the site, that compressor of some sort associated with the refrigeration rooms. And so, so there's a variance in this case that has a condition, a condition that has not been satisfied. And so the, the issue here that gives us the ability to take action on this, and actually it's, it's more so that the property owner has a right here, is the fact that there's a condition that wasn't satisfied. And as we've looked at that condition, it appears that that condition is not necessary, nor necessarily is it practical, according to contractors and people that are there. I have been out to the property, and I don't disagree with that finding, is you don't hear any noise. In fact, the noise from the street overpowers pretty much any noise that you hear from, from the compressor, the mechanicals associated with that improvement. So now we have a variance with a condition that doesn't seem practical, and, but it is part of the variance. And so if you, you know, one attorney I spoke to said, "Well, you can choose to look the other way." And I don't believe, and none of the staff in my office, nor did the city attorney believe that's the proper approach. You could amend the variance, although our code does not have a process to amend the variance, or you could rescind the variance. As long as the property owner who is the, has a vested interest in that property, and this is a variance, as long as that property owner is requesting to, to the word that the attorney used was relinquish that vested property right, that property owner has that right. And that's a property rights thing. That's not necessarily something that our code has to weigh in on, in my opinion, it's a property right. And so because our code does not spell out that process, the property rights act in and of itself because it's being requested by the property owner, gives us the reasonable right to address this issue. And so that's been the advice. Could we amend it? You could do the same thing, but the same issue is there. There's nowhere in our zoning code that it spells out, here's the process for amending or rescinding or revoking a variance. There is language for a conditional use permit, there is language for, for zoning district. So, having said all that, are we 100% sure that we have the right to do this, or the property owner has the right to do this? I've never dealt with a situation like this, and to my, to my knowledge, many people have not. There's not many zoning codes out there, in fact, none that I reviewed that have a process for amending the variance, but it is a property right, and so we're fairly confident that the property owner has that property right to relinquish this. If it was the city saying, "We're going to relinquish your variance," and it's not their request, that's a whole separate issue, and one that we would not support based on what we know from property rights, unless there's a divergence or a violation, or something that is not being satisfied with those conditions of those variance, then it's a problem. So, having said all that, the other, and the, there's a resident that, I believe it's a resident that has spoken and disagrees with that finding from me, so I'll be very clear on that. There is a property owner that lives adjacent to the site that has also submitted an email, and I don't know if that property owner is here, but they've submitted an email that essentially says, "We don't believe this is needed." And so the property owner adjacent to them, that is most affected, has expressed no problem with removing that condition. So the act that we suggest here is to rescind the variance and adopt new. So why do we suggest doing that? That variance is recorded. And so if we say we're going to amend it, and we go through a process, and we amend that condition, then that condition amendment is also recorded. And now we have a variance, and then a variance that undoes a condition, and it's messy. So if we just said repeal and replace, rescind and replace, revoke and replace, whatever word we want to use, the idea is that we're going to do away with the old, reestablish the new without that condition, it's a more clean process. And that was where we landed, and why we landed with the recommendation that we did. And so then the next question, after you take action on this, is do we need to clean up our ordinances and provide a process to amend a variance? I honestly don't know that we need to do that. Could we, and would it make our variance, our ordinances proper maybe so? I think we can add that to the list of things to investigate, we can consult with the League of Minnesota Cities on, is that a best practice to allow for a process or a procedure to amend or repeal a variance? I think we can do that. But at this point in time, we have an action in front of us that's being requested by the property owner, and we believe it's in their vested right to relinquish that variance and reestablish new. We have, in the staff report, findings that's pretty much the same as the findings from 2016, that basically finds it's a reasonable use, it doesn't create a hardship, or it doesn't create an environment that's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And so those findings still are there for this, and the only change would be that we remove that condition for the variance. With that, I would simply welcome any questions, and just reaffirm, we have consulted with the attorney on this, and they agree with this decision.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we rescind and redo, wouldn't we be setting up for something down the road similar like, I'm...
Okay.
If this homeowner that agrees that it's not an issue sells this place, new people move in and say, "Well, what is this?" You know, it was part of the condition to have a barrier, and it's not on there, and you rescinded it, and it's an issue for us. Somebody else builds, it's required, the homeowner next to him says, "Nah, you don't really need to do that." Are we setting ourselves up for something down the road?
So that was one area of concern that I had before we went down this path, and we did talk with the property owner, and the email that we got from the adjacent property owner, and we did visit the site. And there is not noise coming from that site, that doesn't mean that they might change something in the future. So, so could we possibly be setting up? I suppose anything can happen. I don't have a good answer for that question. But what I can tell you is, being on the site, you know, I did not hear noise coming from that that created a problem. Could you build a noise barrier? I don't feel that I have enough knowledge about the operations of their equipment, whether that compressor unit, there's some stuff that's on top of the building. The setback is 30 feet here, so it's pretty significant if you look at where's the front yard being, Mantlev Avenue. And so I think anything that's in there is going to be in that variance area. I don't know the answer to that question. Kind of a long-winded answer.
Well, I've got the old book here in front of me, and it's section 154.03, that covers variances. Well, 154.031 covers appeals, and it indicates that the city council shall serve as a board of adjustments and appeals. The board shall have the powers and duties as set forth by Minnesota statute, as it notes in here, and may be amended from time to time.
So appeals are different. So appeals would be if we took an action, and the applicant disagreed with that action, they have the right to appeal through that, and that's what that section is talking about.
But it's also the board of adjustments and appeals.
Correct.
It all under the realm of adjustments.
And who's, this would not fall under the realm of adjustments, because we are actually establishing a new variance. So this is a public, a variance process where the only difference is that there's a rescind, to rescind the old and establish a new.
I mean, I guess part of the thing to think about would be if, if we were enforcing this, and, let's say, on the negative side, and they were continuing to not fulfill the terms of their, you know, variance, we would have the ability to revoke it. You know, so in essence, that's the same ability, it's just a matter of, they're requesting that we, in essence, revoke it, and they're requesting a new one. So, and when I thought of it, there are cities that have language specific to that in their set of codes. So I mean, to me, that, you know, if we were coming down on, you know, if we were enforcing a variance and saying, "You didn't complete the terms of your variance," you know, which was one, and the reason this came up is because we looked into it. You know, earlier this spring, somebody requested, "Well, why, where's that at?" So I said, "Well, where is this? Why isn't the barricade up? You know, we sent letters." That's why this has come about, really, in fullness of time. If we were going to revoke that, we revoke the variance, they would have the ability still to come back and request a new variance. So I see it in a similar light to that as well, so... I mean, statutorily, I think cities have abilities to do a lot of things, even if it isn't delineated in their own set of codes.
Bit daunting from where I sit.
Sure. Well, you know, I mean, in the fullness of time, I mean, it is a, it's an unusual situation, but that's kind of my perspective on it.
Yeah, I'm not debating what Domino's is trying to do here, that they're trying to do the right thing, and they're being open and honest about their intentions, but we're kind of going off book here to extend them the opportunity to make these adjustments. And I'm just concerned that a year down the road, two years down the road, 10 years down the road, somebody's going to look at this and say, "Hey, you did it for them, you know, do it for me."
If I could, Mr. Chair, speak to the issue of precedents. I know that precedents are used in legal cases all the time, but each variance is to be taken on its own merits, and the precedents should not matter into that. Now, I know that in people's opinions, they do. But if we had another case that was just like this, we would treat it the same way. If we had another case that wasn't just like this, we might not. And so just be clear on, just to be clear on that, that's kind of the precedent discussion. If I could, maybe just a couple more things. So the council, so the planning commission's, you know, and the council of actions on this would be to, to approve it and move it forward, and then there would be a resolution that essentially is rescinding and then replacing. Or the council could deny it, and we would establish findings for denial, and that would essentially mean that the existing variance still exists, that it is unchanged. And that means that the applicant would have to figure out, "How do I build this noise barrier," or whatever that noise barrier may be. And so that is legitimate action on this, I believe. We would just state, "These are our findings for denial," and that's what we would move forward. And if, if the planning commission feels that that's a more appropriate action, what I would request, after you have the public hearing, is to direct me to go back and find those findings, so I could draft those findings, and we would bring that to you at the next meeting. We have time to do that.
Go through the process?
Mm-hmm.
Any additional thoughts or questions? Brad, did you have anything more to contribute before I open up the public hearing, sir?
Uh, no, sir, I don't.
With that said, I will open up the public hearing on this matter, and again, this is the Domino's variance rescind and reissue. Anybody has anything they would like to contribute, if you come to the podium, name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Dahlman. I live at 10840 Riverbend Lane in Oronoco. And I'm the property owner of the building. And so it's, it's my reason we're not here, we're here discussing this. So recently, I've retired from the Army, United States Army, after 32 years. And so at the time that this was going through in 2016, I was actually stationed at the Pentagon or working at another government agency at the time. So I didn't know, my father took care of it for me, and so I didn't realize until this summer that we were out of compliance. And so that's why I made the, I just want to make this right. And so, so with that, I contacted multiple contractors, and they, you know, told me that it's, you know, two feet above the existing structure, it's about, you know, three to four feet tall. You're just making a wind sail up on top, and we can just guarantee you that it will just blow off. So I contacted the city, and this is probably the best way, Brad, to walk me through. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
That felt, huh?
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any of you have anything to contribute? Now I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, sir. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I'll, I'll start by saying, you know, as Brad said, precedent is not really something that you need to consider, but for me, consistency is. And so the fact that the request is that we're reducing the variance, that the conditions of the variance, we're not adding to. So if, for instance, if we were to prove this, a precedent would be, would prevent somebody who's requested, has a variance, and requests and wants to add to that variance, so they've got a variance of, you know, we just recently had a side yard setback we went through. If they wanted to extend that another foot or another two feet, now we're adding a condition that we're not subtracting. So that's, for me, I'm okay with subtracting the condition on the variance as we're replacing it with a new one. We're not adding to it. So that's still a common, that kind of...
Just me personally, I have no issue with this being rescinded as is, with the close homeowner not having an issue with it. You visiting it, and there actually being less noise, my only issue is if they go to replace that compressor, or get a cheap compressor, and all of a sudden it starts wailing, and there starts to be an issue, can somebody come back and say, "Hey, you rescinded this, it should have been taken care of in the first place?" That's the only hitch I, I see.
Gentlemen?
Yeah, my only concern would be coming back after the fact. I think, as long as the homeowner's okay with it, you know, I think that's the biggest thing, and I think that's why I was there to begin with, was, was more of a noise protection.
And I think that's what Farnsworth wanted in the first place.
Yep.
But if he's okay with it, I guess, as is right now, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Moving, moving forward, I'm not worried about somebody coming back and a precedent issue or anything like that, and I, I think we, we do a pretty good job with that, and that, that wouldn't bother me. But yeah, I, like I said, the biggest thing I would be concerned with was, you know, if, if all of a sudden, you know, something changed with, with the location or the, or the building to the, to the point where all of a sudden now it's, you know, now the culture up there is making a lot more noise, and, and all of a sudden Farnsworth are back saying, "Hey, we've got an issue now."
Yep.
You know, that would be my, my biggest concern. But other than that, yeah, I, as long as they're all right with it, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Well, and like I said, I, I think we're doing the right thing, and I have no doubts about that at all. It's just the, the process lacks a certain level of documentation that, that concerns me a little bit. I'll leave those comments until we're done with the matter at hand, and try to balance them. But unless there's no other thoughts, questions, concerns, I will look for a motion, please, gentlemen.
Now, just a point of order here, are we motioning to accept the request to rescind, and then a second motion to reestablish the variance?
I think that would probably be good, yeah.
Sure. I think you could combine them because they're related.
Okay.
If you don't rescind it, then we're amending it, so that changes it. So I think the motion could be to, to rescind and approve.
Sure.
And when the council's action happens, we'll make sure that, we'll work with the city attorney to make sure that we're, we're doing it procedurally in the correct way.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the letter to rescind the previous variance, variance that's been established, and to replace with a new variance, less the condition set for the barrier.
And we're, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded it? Okay, thank you.
And I believe everybody approved. Do we have any questions?
Okay.
Before we move on, do we need to start the conversation about amending?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to do any of that power very directly, and I mean, it makes sense to me, because it becomes, again, a future image. It doesn't have to be particularly complicated language.
Yeah, I, I think, just looking over the past number of years, understanding what that process is, because I've, every time it's come up, it's always kind of been this brick wall, you can't do that because of, and I believe state-related legislation in place.
So how often, how often has this come up?
I mean, it's, I don't believe there's...
We've had conditional use, I know the cities have conditional use, it's more so than variance.
I don't believe that there's state legislation that dictates whether you can attempt, but I think it's more of a, a legal opinion about what rights do you have in a community and a property owner rights. But has it come up frequently?
Frequently, no, I want to say a couple times.
I'm aware of a 2016 case where it came up.
Yeah, I want to say it's come up at least, so this would be at least twice.
Yeah.
But I guess more importantly, just...
Yeah.
Having that process in place, so if anybody ever comes in the door...
Yep.
Everybody's on the same page, I guess, is kind of where my head is at in that request. And I don't know if that starts with our city council, or if that's something that we initiate, or...
Well, you know, we can have some language for you, maybe at a, a future meeting, maybe even take a look at that, where it would fit in the code, and, you know, I think that'd be the best way to do it. You know, I think initiate, you initiate it here, and then present something to the council for them to finalize. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it makes sense to me, unless there's any...
No. We will, we'll carry the dialogue and the conversation to the council level, and as I, as I mentioned, when we updated the zoning ordinance recently, inevitably, we're going to pass that zoning ordinance, or we're going to hit a stumbling block. I just didn't think it'd be this quick.
Well, I mean, there, there are a couple other, when I thought about this, there are a lot of other, there are other situations which could make a variance unpractical. You know, for example, if you had a variance on a building that got torn down, I mean, that obviously doesn't make any sense. Or if someone came to you and said, you know, "Here's why I wanted the variance," and they lied to you, and you found out that, you know, they lied to you, you know, through fraud, you'd say, "Well, we're, you know, we're revoking this due, this was a fraudulent..."
Sure.
You know, very, so I mean, there are factors that you could take, and I think that language we will include, so...
Yeah, and there are powers with, if it's fraudulent, there are powers specifically about that.
But I can think of variances that were granted on projects that never proceeded.
Exactly.
And that's kind of, you know, on the list of things to consider, and you're, you're wrong about that.
Sure.
Thank you for the indulgence in my rant there. 2020 committee was, next item. Twenty twenty committee list, next slide.
We have a permanent chairman, I believe, is that correct? Something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, he's, he's here.
The Politburo a little bit, no, we've, uh, I just wanted you all to see the committee list there, and I think we, was it one member, Linda?
Uh, Joe.
Joe, it's.
Do you want to continue?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, the first meeting in January will set the, um, you know, whoever wants to be chair, you know, it's a permanent chairmanship kind of thing, you know.
That's the process, my bad.
I won't be here next month. We might be chairing, you know, come, it's a little bit like church, go on now.
God, on, on the bottom of the list of things to note on this meeting, my office number has changed, you should take that off there, please, and I'll give you my cell phone number or something.
You got that?
Let us call you home.
Um, you know, I'm not sure my home landline actually works. That's a very, very different story. Uh, my, my dear daughter has destroyed many of the phones that used to work around the house.
What, she yanked the cord out of the wall, or?
Uh, she runs the batteries down.
Oh, there you go.
And then she doesn't put the phone back on the base, so they never recharge it.
And you can't find it anyways.
Oh, I know where they are, I just got to go dig behind the backside. And forgive your rant again, anything else around the twenty twenty committee list?
No, that was it.
Okay. And under other, you have got Southwest Property.
Sure, um, we've got a memo in there from Nicholas, who's our EDA guy, and this is not something you need to have any action at this meeting, but I just want to run this past you, and I'll let you know that the, uh, EDA has been looking at this property in the southwest part of town, and this is not by any means, any kind of final thing, it's just a matter of kind of a, I don't know if you want to call it a dreamscape, or just planning, really, it's the, the idea they had of trying to make sure that the city has a, a good ability to potentially have industrial or commercial, you know, land available. You know, we have a very residential community, and one of the things I know when I was starting here was, uh, the council was very interested in trying to diversify the tax base, and I think we all have an interest in that, in providing for jobs for our local community. So, basically, they're taking a look at the only property the city really owns that has any potential development ability, and, um, I think, you know, this would probably necessitate some changes to our planning that we've done in the past, in our comprehensive plan, it, uh, includes this area as more of just a park, and, um, so that's something that we would take a look at. But I just wanted to get in your hands, so you can see at this time what they have kind of visualized, um, obviously, you know, subject to change. And then the cost of, that are associated with that as well. And if there's any questions, though, you have to take those.
And are, we, we're looking at this just because this is city-owned property at the moment, from that standpoint.
Well, and if we're ever to move forward, obviously, I'd like to keep everybody on the same page. You know, one of the things that we've noticed, um, I had a meeting, talking with the parks, parks department today a little bit, is at times in the past, we haven't always had consultation on, you know, uh, you know, our, our plans for the parks, or for the, you know, EDA, you know, like, we want to sort of have a little more integrated effort. If we were going to bring this forward to the planning commission as a, as a development or concept plan, that's what we would, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to have some input on that sort of thing.
Does anybody have anything else to prepare to discuss this evening? I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.